...to discuss the Knox County Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have Mr. Gocke here who has issued us cards and is about to give us a presentation. Is that right, sir?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Keener.
That's twice this week, by the way. In seven days, you've disrespected me twice.
That's right.
You're doing good.
That's below average. That's below average. I can do better. I'll get that. Don't worry. Todd and Tanner and Mayor, I sent you some slides, if you don't mind.
Did you send it to me?
Slapping those up there. So, I was asked to come and present to you on behalf of the Together Knox Knox County Comprehensive Plan Update Group, just to see where we're at in the process, maybe some important data, and then some next steps. Council members, you should all have a stack of business card-sized cards. QR code on there goes to the website where folks can sign up for updates. Hopefully, you have all done that as well. Updates along the process, and then eventually, the draft plan, the final plan will be on there as well. So, I'll do this briefly because I believe we're behind already, so I don't want to take up much of that break time that you all enjoy right before your meeting. So, Together Knox is the initiative to update the Knox County Comprehensive Plan. It is a combined effort between the Knox County Commissioners, Knox County Regional Planning Commission, Area Development Foundation, and you all, the city of Mount Vernon. The previous comprehensive plan was done in 2018-19. So, it was designed to last five years or so, so it's at the end of its life. It's time to update it anyway. Given all of the growth, or expected growth, or uncertainty, we'll call it, coming from Licking County, we thought that it was time to update the plan regardless. So, 2024 is that time. I took this kind of right off the website of what a comprehensive plan is. Basically, you can think of it all as a compass for the community for the next five to 10 years. Comprehensive plans themselves are non-binding, but what they do serve as is a guidebook for priorities over the next term. They do serve as the wellspring of binding policy, right? So, zoning policies, land use policies, investments, how the city wants to allocate its resources can all be aligned with the principles that come out of the plan. So, while it itself is not binding, it will lead to a whole lot of stuff that is. Okay. And then I mentioned a little bit why we need a new one. The current one was at the end of its life, and then uncertainty coming from our south kind of gave us a good opportunity to update it there. So, the scope of the plan, you can see there, and I took this directly from the request for proposals that we sent out to professional planning firms. So, this is what we wanted, this is the scope, things we wanted them to address. Land use and growth planning in particular, safeguarding existing agriculture and natural land, accommodating growth while mitigating sprawl, transportation recommendations, outdoor parks, trails, outdoor space protection, diverse housing options, and community pride. So, all the things that we might need to address, communities that are growing might need to address. And then in the next slide, I had some very specific things that should show up in the plan, specific issues that should show up. Land use particularly in the city and the part of the southwestern part of the county, is this, that's basically the same stuff. Oh, I didn't skip my, there we go. Issues to address, sorry, I was looking at the, issues to address. Housing quality, responsible growth, transportation, maximizing our outdoor space, recreation, agriculture, accommodating the Amish community. The previous plan did not address the Amish community, but as it has been growing in the county, we felt that they were an important constituency to address. Economic and workforce resilience, zoning and rural land use, coordination between governments, and then service delivery. Number eight, I highlighted community character because one of the things that I like about the vendor that we selected is that they don't just look at land use two-dimensionally in terms of like, this is the zoning map, and here's the purple area, here's the red area, and here's the yellow area, right? They look at that, of course, but then they also look at what's the character of the community? What's the character of the area of the yellow parts of the map and the red parts of the map? And then how do we preserve that character? Because essentially, that's what we're trying to do here, right, is not necessarily say R1, single family, but it's the character type of that R1, single family, or that downtown historic corridor that is our identity, right, that we really cling to. So, they were really the only group that addressed character type. So, I wanted to call that out specifically. Process. This has been the subject of some of Cheryl's excellent coverage lately. Basically, this started way back in, almost a year ago, when we formed the group. The four entities came together and sort of agreed to work on this as a coalition. We drafted up an RFP that was all approved by the constituent, the four constituent entities. A steering committee was chosen, this is out of order a little bit. We chose a vendor, Planning Next, as the company. They are a national, actually, they've worked nationally and internationally, but they have a local presence, Columbus-based. The owner of the company chose to buy a farm in Knox County because he likes it here, and he gets what we're trying to do. And now, hopefully, he can help us to do it better and continue to do it. Thirty-five-person steering committee was chosen representing a broad cross-section of the county. So, we have sort of the four corners of the county covered, the unincorporated areas, the incorporated areas, but it's more than geographic. We looked at demographics, we looked at educational status, we looked at age. There's three high school, or two high school kids and one college student on the committee. We looked at industry sectors, we looked at employers, and we tried to create a group that represents a broad cross-section of the county, because we only have 35 people. You can't pick, can't pick everybody, right? So, then we went into our data gathering phase. That's, I believe, you all participated in the, one of the activities, the meeting in the box activities. That was one of them. I'll get into that in a second. Drafting principles and recommendations, that's done. Talk about that in a second, and then revision, and then final community approval. Later this year, maybe early '25, I'll be back when this is all done, and we'll talk about, it would be great if the four entities, boards and councils ratified the plan, but then I also want to go to township trustees, and the villages, and the Kiwanis Club, and the school board, and get as much buy-in and approval by all of those boards and commissions as well. These things only work if the community believes in them. Okay. Public engagement, there was three, three types, really. We're just going to start the second, but over the first series of public engagement, we wanted to make a survey that was self-selective. We don't want to force people to take it. We want people to take it who feel like they have something to say, right? So, we got about 1,200 people across the county to give their input. That resulted in 4,450 treasures, or things they like about the county, 4,109 outcome statements, things they would like to see in the plan. That's a lot to choose from, 2,047 dots on the map. So, that's a lot of community input to sift through, and it paints a pretty clear story. I mean, if you look at that very small map, it's pretty clear where the green, where the public feels the green and red areas protect and improve areas in the city are, right? And then overall, through all the research we did, we got, we gathered over 10,000 individual pieces of data. That's census data, economic data, demographic data, and public input along the way. So, that is a very robust series of data to choose from. We are now ready to present that to the public, which will be done, skip to the next one, please.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, which will be done October 29th, 5:30 to 8:30. There will be a, calling it a Focus on the Future Workshop at the Woodward. Everybody's invited. We want as many people to come as we can. There will be sort of a two-part, two-part workshop. So, in the upstairs and maybe on the second floor, there will be all of this data we gathered, the draft principles, some recommendations that the public can weigh in on and comment on. So, you'll be able to see a lot of the data and a lot of the recommendations so far, and comment on it. And then from 6:00 to 7:30 or so, we're going to have a panel discussion talking about regional trends, so that attendees can be educated on what's going on outside of Knox County, maybe. So, we've got Kenny McDonald. He's the CEO of One Columbus. He can talk about regional, economic, and housing trends. These three are all very good gets for us. Jason Duff is the president of a group in Bell Fountain called Small Nation. If you haven't been to Bell Fountain recently, look at what they've done with their downtown. That's a community that's doing it right. And then Dr. Howard Sacks, retired professor from Kenyon, who was the founder of the Rural Life Center, and we want somebody who is well-educated and experienced in rural life, agriculture, and open space, quality-of-life protection strategies, things like that. So, that'll be moderated by Jamie Green. He's the principal of Planning Next. And then how to stay informed, that QR code takes you to the website. It's the same that's on those cards. You yourselves can sign up for website updates. It will send you invites, it will send you notifications. Eventually, when the plans are done, they'll be up there, and then, like I said, I'll be back. Hey, there's a bunch of them sitting right here. Did anybody take them? Would you like more? Anyway, there you go. Questions on that? I think I'm...
Yeah, it's not your fault, but we're over time. So, council, unless you have a dramatic question, probably I'll...
I'm sure he'll be back.
He'll be back.
But ask it dramatically, too.
Like a bad...
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, I'm done with my...
Hey, we're adjourning land use development. We're turning now to Mr. Miller with Parks and Rec on American Heritage Park.
Thank you.
I was by there last night. Making a lot of progress.
They're working hard. They are working hard over there. It looks like it's going to be all set for the 28th. So, we're hoping. But we have Olivia Toth here from the Knox County Convention and Visitors Bureau to explain what's going on down there at American Heritage Park, and she'll give us an overview and hopefully, all you need to know. And just so you know, I intend tonight to bring it to its last reading for a vote to change the name officially, so we're all set for the dedication at the end of this month. Olivia, please.
Great, thank you. Pardon my voice. Like you said, my name is Olivia Toth. I'm with the market, I'm the marketing manager for the Knox County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And your packet here just gives you a breakdown of kind of what our involvement has been at, like at the CANC Visitor Center, how long we've been there, and kind of our visioning as we continue to be the destination marketing organization that is really charged with bringing that visitor experience and economic development leg of tourism to Knox County. So, when you flip that open, again, just our vision and mission and our responsibility, you know, for promotion and publicizing Knox County, and of course, the city of Mount Vernon. The timeline there just gives you a brief rundown of how we've been involved. In 2021, we did implement the CANC visitor branding to the actual building, again, to better impact what it means to come to the building and interact with our staff, and just to share the history with our community and visitors. In '22, we worked closely with the park's development plan to just see what kind of ideas we could share back and forth, what that meant with the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the engineering can look at it one way, but we're looking at it at a way of what does this campus mean when people actually come here and interact with it, and move along the trail, and use our recreation. In '23, as we waited on restoration and the plans of what's going on now at the park, we did mock up some signage as, well, that's one of our biggest roadblocks or challenges we see as sitting in that building, is people don't often know what is in that building or what is offered from the city and from our staff, as being a resource center, as being that first window and welcome center to the city and the county. So, that's just something we wanted to start talking about, as now we're in this level of planning with the park. So, move ahead to '24, and now we're, you know, revitalization's done on the roof, we're getting the, we're getting all that work done, and American Heritage Park is piloted as the name. So, what does that really mean when it comes to the city? You know, we wanted to get together with the city, with the mayor and Tanner, Mike, and Amber, and really talk about, it's so much more than just a park. It really is this impasse of what it means to enter Mount Vernon and what the opportunities are. So, you know, a lot like the actual Statue of Liberty, our Statue of Liberty that will be on this campus is really that shiny beacon of opportunity, but really tying in our rich history, our influence on our industry locally, and our dedication to service. So, again, more, more of a storytelling around the actual campus. So, when we're greeting that over 10,000 visitors just to that property over the last couple of years, we really have a pointed way of introducing them to Mount Vernon and the things that we really hang our hat on, the history, the influence and industry, and the service to self, locally, and to our country. So, as you flip to American Heritage Park, Liberty Plaza, I just have some examples of how we intend to work with the city to really promote this park, again, as something more than just a park, giving a rundown of the history of just the campus itself, from the 1905 depot to now the Statue of Liberty, and what does that mean when you interact with that as a guest or a community? How is it a point of pride for someone that lives here or visits here? So, these are just an example of a rack card you could see, and also a button we intend to have our staff wear as we, again, visit or welcome guests in. When we're talking about onsite and what we own and what we, what we have, right now, our features are that visitor center and Liberty Plaza. Those are our main, you know, big items that are on that campus. And then I've listed our amenities, and those are things people are going to be looking for, asking for, and then future use. Obviously, we know about First Responders Memorial and Veterans Walk, possibilities there. So, again, just, just something, so we all are on the same page and lockstep when it comes to plans for further revitalization. The other packet you were given is the communication guide, and that's something that I provided to the mayor and Tanner when we're talking about how are we collectively going to speak about this park, and what does that mean from press releases to social media. This guide right here just gives us, again, some talking points. When we have a visitor, when we have a community member asking questions, we can really reference that guide internally and feel like we're informed about why this is an important part of who we are. And when we get to signage, you know, with the new distinction, it's more important than ever. Like I mentioned, some community members know that the CANC is a visitor center, but probably 80% of the community members that walk in our door every day said, "I didn't know this was here. I didn't know what this building was." And, you know, that's our job, is to inform them. But now, with a little bit more going on at that property, a little bit more investment, revitalization, this is the time to really make sure we make that impact, not only at this park, but all our community parks, really showing that each of these parks have their own identity, their own use, their own point of pride for our community. So, this is really just the beginning of that conversation. And that last page is just how we can kind of use the development of the comprehensive plan to really inform, you know, how many more signs do we need in parks, and how are we really talking about our parks as an entry point to Mount Vernon and the community as a whole? So, that was all I had.
No, thank you. I think they do a pretty good job down there. Actually, a wonderful job for the size of our community, very dedicated at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've been in there on my own oftentimes over the years and ask questions about what they do, and that type of thing. And then now with the renovation facility and the branding, rebranding of the park, and if you haven't noticed, on the weekends, that's a very busy location for people from out of town that are looking, where do I park to hit the bike trail, or visit our parks? That's one of the spots that they stop at all the time. That's also the only place where I've had a lot of people say we need an open bathroom, which I know the city's working on that on the weekends, because it's there during the weekdays. But the value of a convention or a visitor bureau, I don't think can be understated. I know I travel a lot, and when we do, if I'm looking for local things to do in a community, I call the, I look for a convention and visitors bureau, whether it be a local restaurant that's not all trendy and touristy, whether it be, if you can recommend hotels. I once found a mandolin and violin player for an anniversary for me and my wife in the middle of West Virginia, Davis, West Virginia, on a short notice, because I called the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they said, "Hey, you can call my sister." So, they're very valuable, have good local knowledge.
It's West Virginia.
I know, West Virginia. They all know each other, right?
That's not a brag.
It's like Cincinnati. But, so, they're very, they do valuable work. And then I, unless I misinterpreted all those little dots on Mr. Gocke's presentation, Foundation Park is, was a lot of green dots, I think, is one of the gems that really stuck out in the city. And that is part of that. And so, this is that, that opening spot that's easy to find, easy to identify for people to visit our parks and visit. So, I thank you for what you do and for what you presented tonight.
Would you give us a timeframe on where we're going to see Lady Liberty, and where we're going to see the veterans' bricks moved to Heritage Park?
Oh, that's above my pay grade, so I don't want to speak on a turn. But we are supposed to dedicate Lady Liberty October 28th.
I think October 28th.
10:00 AM.
For Lady Liberty, and then the Veterans Walk, that is going to be a year or so down the road, and the same with the EMS First Responders Memorial. So, this is, be the grand opening of that as a new park here at the end of the month. And looks nice, benches, a lot of stuff's going in.
What time on the 28th?
10:00 AM.
And I, if council had, hopefully, councils all received an invite to that. If not, I would encourage...
Waiting for tonight.
Waiting for tonight. That's, so tonight, they want to, they want to do the press release tomorrow, I think, is the clue, is the hint here. That way, we'll all get an invite to be to American Heritage Park dedication of the Statue of Liberty. And actually, if you read in there, it is kind of cool, if you look at the mold that that Lady Liberty was made from. There's some history with that, too. But it all connects to Mount Vernon history, and then it also piggybacks with Knox County history, the entire discussion that I've been in with American Heritage Park. So, I can say, I even myself, I'm like, why are we calling it that? And I asked, and there's a lot of history here to be told, and I love history, but it's being very well-connected to all of that. And I think that'll be an asset to the city and a real focal point, because it is, it sticks out. People see it, particularly if you're from out of town. When you live in town, people still don't know where Foundation Park is. I still have people, we have this park in our city. But that's because you're here and you see it every day. But when you're coming into town, an old railroad depot with a Statue of Liberty on one of the busiest roads, if not the busiest intersection we have in the city, that will attract and draw, take people's attention.
Yeah, like I said, we see nearly 10,000 visitors at our property over the last three years. So, it's very important for us to make this cohesive and make it a real attraction, something bigger that's been done before. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Just to add, the October 28th was also the day, was also the day that the actual Statue of Liberty was dedicated. So, a little more connection to American Heritage Park.
Thank you. I want to adjourn the Parks and Recreation Committee. We're now in recess until 7:30 PM. We begin the legislative portion of the meeting. And Mr. Hill, you have another piece of legislation for us?
Two. Two pieces, yes. I'm going to distribute these as soon as, as soon as you stop talking. No offense.
Wow. Wow.
Very good.
Wow.
Now 7:30 PM, we're going to call the October 14th, 2024 legislative session of Mount Vernon City Council order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Ben Driver from Mount Vernon Church of Christ. Please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you, Pastor.
Yes. Let us pray together. Father, we are deeply privileged and humbled to be able to gather here in your presence. Father, I am grateful for the privilege to be able to come before you in prayer, and I am especially grateful this evening to be able to come before you on behalf of the city council. And Father, as we come before you, we ask for your help and your blessing and your guidance on all that is done here and at all that happens here. Father, we pray for our world, we pray for our country, we pray for our state, and we pray for our city. Father, we ask that you would be with each one of us, that you would lead us and guide us, and that you would help us to walk in a way that is pleasing to you. We pray, Father, especially tonight, for the discussion and the decisions that are made. I ask, Father, that the things that are said and the things that are discussed would be things that are pleasing in your sight. We pray, Father, that your mighty hand and your mighty power would be seen in this, in this community that we live in. Father, your word tells all of us to clothe ourselves in humility towards you, to humble ourselves under your mighty hand so that at the right time, you may lift us up. And so, Father, no matter who we are, whether we are an elected official, whether we are a resident of Knox County, we ask, Father, that you would help us to humbly look to your strength and your might. Father, we know that you are King and you are Lord. And so, Father, we bow down before you and we ask that you would be pleased with the things that go on here tonight. Father, please bless this meeting and bless this community. We pray, Father, that you would watch over us and that you would help us to be the people that you would want us to be and that we would be able to live in joy and peace with one another. We thank you, Father, for all the good blessings that you do give us. And we thank you for Jesus, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. As council in your packet were the minutes of the legislative session from September 23rd. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And moved as second, they be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. They are approved. You have no liquor control licenses tonight. I see new proclamations of people wanting to speak on matters of city concern. So we're going to move the legislative portion of the meeting, and I'm going to ask council's permission for me to change the agenda. We appreciate Mrs. Seville being here. She's not feeling well, but she wanted to be here so we could act on certain things tonight. So I want to move to ordinance number 2442 to be first, and then we're going to move to resolution 104, 105, and 106 to be next, and then we'll go back to the regular portion of the meeting.
Point of order, Mr. Hawkins, is that, first of all, if we could add ordinances 2024, 42, and 2024, 43 to the agenda?
Yes. Those items were given to us this evening, so we ask that those be included in the agenda.
So moved? Or is that, do we have to move on that? No?
Well, if we approve the agenda, we approve it by consensus.
Okay.
Moving then to ordinance number 2024 dash 42. Mr. Hill.
You said ordinance number 2024?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 2024, 42, an ordinance with reference to the wages and benefits of bargaining unit employees and fixing the wages and benefits of bargaining unit employees of the city of Mount Vernon, Ohio. Dan Emmett Chapter of slash and the Ohio Civil Service Employees Association, Local 11 slash American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, wages to be effective the first day of July 2024 and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
And we need to pass this this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024 dash 42 to its third and final reading.
And move it second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2024 dash 42.
Second. And move it second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Do we need any other comments? We had a discussion earlier. Everybody good? I think we're good. Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Appreciate the, the members of that bargaining unit to, to work with the city administration to finalize that. That's our third, third one we've, we've approved, and we appreciate the, the support of the administration and of the members of the collective bargaining unit. Now we move to resolution number 2024 dash 101. Mr. Hill.
I'm sorry, resolution 101, you said?
104.
Yeah, 104.
104, okay.
That doesn't have to be done tonight. It could be, but it doesn't have to be.
Resolution number 2024 dash 104, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to dispose of vehicles in the police department not needed for public use by the city of Mount Vernon and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2024 dash 104 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move it second for suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller. Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024 dash 104.
Second.
And move it second for adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Well, we have the chief here to talk about these neat things. I see an airstream trailer. That's looks neat.
We have acquired an airstream trailer.
Yeah. Is that pretty nice?
It's not in the greatest of shape, no.
I'm shocked.
But we, we need to get it out of our impound. It's been there for a period of time. The paperwork's been done on it, and nobody's claimed it. Along with the other four vehicles on the list, this is our ongoing effort to keep our impound lot free of airstream trailers.
I was going to say, somebody want to go fishing?
Some rough cars. So you folks have done this for us several times, and, you know, we're, we're grateful. We take this and we turn it back around to use it for other programs within the police department within the city. So this is kind of just ongoing.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024 dash 105. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024 dash 105, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2024 dash 105 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move it second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number 2024 dash 105.
Second.
And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Well, we got $11,000 here. Would you like to tell us about it?
I do. So we are transferring from the auditor's expense account, computer maintenance, $11,000, to services received. I think it was my second day here. I was contacted by the auditing firm of Clark Schaefer and Hackett. They are contracted to do an audit on the department. Normally, that audit happens every year. The past auditors was a firm called Wilson, Shannon, and Snow. And if you use the same audit firm year after year, year after year, it's not always a good thing. So we contracted with a different firm this year. They are going to finish that audit up the 16th through the 18th. And then Clark Schaefer and Hackett sent me an email talking about that and also reminding us that there are five unpaid invoices from that dating from May through September totaling almost $11,000. It was $10,950, which we didn't have in the account. And the email that I received goes on to say that, as a background, the audit contract, we have submitted invoices to the auditor, auditor of state system. So I was able to go onto the auditor of state system and see how that is documented in there and verify the five invoices that they were talking about. So basically, we, we just need to pay that. The total amount of the contract is $33,596. So after we catch up on these invoices and after they're done with the audit, we will still owe $10,196. So I will be back to ask you to transfer those funds from someplace that I can find those, please.
Any other discussion?
I have two questions. So this is catching up on bills that hadn't been paid yet?
Correct.
And the question I caught with the auditing firm. Had the city been using the same auditing firm each year? Then you caught this and said, we're going to do a different one for better practice?
I didn't catch this. I believe. Yeah, that was before me.
So we're best management practices here to get a different, which I agree with.
The previous auditing firm had been used for 14 years, I believe. They were, under that auditing firm, the significant theft occurred out of the municipal court. I, and working with the other members of the administration, we just said that it was unacceptable to continue with them, and so.
We brought that to the attention of the state auditor, and they were kind of shocked that that was still happening as well. So typically, it's standard practice that even if there's theft in office, that you would change your, what they call an IPA. We did not do that. I don't know why we didn't do that. That was prior years. But we did it. We finally did it. So there you go.
Just clarification of mistakes.
What's interesting on that, too, is if you go into the auditor state system, it lists all that. You have to report that on there. So they would have known that we didn't change our auditor as well.
So maybe the state auditor wasn't auditing like they should have.
Perhaps.
Hear, hear.
The auditor of state typically is the one that puts it out to bid, so that's, yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024 dash 106. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024 dash 106, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to section 5705.41D, then and now certification.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules that require three separate readings and take resolution number 2024 dash 106 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move it second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024 dash 106.
Second.
And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? I mean, Mrs. Seville.
Well, we have then and now the $13,000 here. So these are ones that you just found?
So these are three bills, yes, that we came across that we knew needed to be paid and verified that they needed to be paid and needed to do that. So the first one is the Google account, which is an invoice that was dated August 31st for $4,388.22. We're going to take that from the networking systems account under, and I'm sorry, I forgot my notes on this. I think it's under human resource, but I'm not sure. The next one was Knox County Commissioners, to the Knox County Commissioners, $4,400 to be taken from account services received. And that was chargeback of the countywide mass notification system, or WENS. So that's that notification system that goes in case there's a tornado or typhoon or anything that comes across like that. And then the third one is to Target Solution Learning Center in the amount of $4,778.28 to be taken from services received.
That is HR.
That, that one is HR. Yeah, correct. And that is for, this is like a.
I can, I can give some background of that one. This was, as we discussed with the CBA, we had some incentives built in. As we removed those, this was for a system that frankly, we don't use anymore. It was used very little when we first used it. We tried to get out of that contract. We are bound to that contract. So in the rigmarole of trying to get out of it, we found out we could not. So now we are going to pay for it, and that's, that was, yeah, that one was on us. The other two, working with Mr. Mayville here, frankly, the accounts ran out of money. And I'm, we had to transfer dollars back in, and our administrative assistants could not write POs on accounts that didn't have dollars in them.
Any other questions?
One question. So to the county commissioners, is this, are we caught up with what we owe the county?
Yeah, it's, it's caught up. The issue, the issue is the, we are writing a blanket for the county commissioner of the WENS system.
Okay.
And for whatever reason, again, the account, now, I would say in the past, money had been moved to cover these things, and that's currently not what's happening. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Going back now to resolution, the first resolution that we had for tonight, 2024 dash 100. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024 dash 100, a resolution naming the ground surrounding the C A and C Depot, American Heritage Park, and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Miller.
I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for resolution 2024 100 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And move it second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs., Mr. Miller.
I move to adopt resolution 2024 100.
Second.
And move it second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Miller.
None. Okay. Sorry, yes. I'm sorry. No, I don't have, they only discuss, yeah, we discussed, we discussed this at our parks committee at the beginning of council, and it needs to be done so we can have the official grand opening and dedication of the park on October 28th, which I believe this week or early next week, all council members should get an invite and other community leaders.
Thank you.
I was thinking of rigmarole, sorry.
Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024 dash 102. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024 dash 102, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to release a request for qualifications for identifying and selecting a qualified firm or firms to provide professional services for owner's representative services related to the construction of municipal buildings, identify and enter into contract with the selected firm or firms for the professional services for owner's representative services related to the construction of municipal buildings and declaring any emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, we'll give this a first reading this evening.
This resolution receives its first reading. We now move to resolution number 2024.
Do you want to do a committee meeting next time?
Do, we need one for how long? 10 minutes? 10 minute committee meeting next time, yes.
Resolution number 2024 dash 103. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024 dash 103, a resolution confirming the mayor's reappointment of William Smith as a regular member of the Board of Zoning Appeals and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take.
Wow. And move it second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
I move to adopt resolution 2024 103.
Second.
Thank you.
And move it second for adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Sir, follow that.
Madam Chair. I think we all know who Bill Smith is. He's sat right across from where I'm sitting in Mr. Brown's office as our city law director for a number of years. He is very well, what's that?
33.
33 years. Yeah, anyway. He is well versed in the topic of zoning and appeals and so forth. He loves doing this, and he wants to continue, so I'd like to have your blessing in reappointing him.
Any other discussion?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Ms. Keener. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now we move to ordinances. The first one is ordinance number 2024 dash 41. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 41, an ordinance establishing compensation pay grades for supervisory and professional personnel and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. We'll give this a second reading. Can I have a 10-minute committee meeting next time, please?
Okay. Amendment resolution receives a second reading, and, and we now move the final ordinance, the ordinance number 2024 dash 43, which is added this evening. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 43, an ordinance amending, fixing the number of hourly employees of the city of Mount Vernon in the, in the police department and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I'll give this its first reading, and you want a 15-minute?
10 or 15 minutes.
Let's do, let's do 15, just in case. Okay.
That ordinance receives its first reading, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We move now to remarks, administration. Mayor, start.
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. I gave you an, an update on Friday, so I'm not going to belabor any of those. I do want to thank everyone who came out to the Servitas event on Saturday at Ariel Foundation Park. We had about 500 high school students competing in various, in various acts of physical strength and teamwork and, and decision-making and everything. It was a really great turnout, wonderful weather, and I know it's something that we want to build on. And so, anyway, if you made it out there, I, I hope you were able to make it out there and, and see these young people working together and problem solving and overcoming obstacles. So it was, it was a great day. So that is all, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Sayers.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, council, for passing the OCSEA contract. Good negotiation with OCSEA, the administration, and their negotiating team. Just want to go ahead and say the bad news now. There will not be a fall cleanup day. We've been going back and forth with, we'll just say, the vested parties, and can't really get those logistics locked down. And as we move into all the things that we've got going on here administratively, and as we move into budget season, we just don't have the manpower to put that time and effort in. So however, next year, we do have a system in place that we will make sure that we have an earlier spring cleanup day, a fall cleanup day early October, and have that shred day. On top of that, do want to let everybody know that the website, the new city website launch will be early in the morning on October 16th. So we wanted to move that out that way as we upload everything from this council meeting. That's not disrupted. But October 16th, Wednesday, we will be unveiling the new city website, and I think you'll all be very impressed with that, hopefully. And, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're making sure that we move everything from what was on the prior website, documents and whatnot, moved over to this, but just more accessible and more fresh. We're trying to avoid anything more than three clicks. If you're there for more than three clicks, then you're just looking around. So, yeah. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Stone.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. May, Mr. Mayville.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr., Mrs. Seville.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Severance.
Just a reminder, when does leaf pickup begin?
We're looking toward the end of the month, and we'll be rolling out a schedule soon. Yep.
They're falling now. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you to our new auditor and his staff for all the work that they're doing right now. I apologize, Mrs. Woods. I was thinking of, actually, what I was thinking of is, did we need to do an official excu- excusal? Is that the word for Mrs. Keener tonight? We usually do those at the beginning of council.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I did, I noticed that you didn't do it, so I assumed there's a reason, but you can certainly move to excuse her now.
Retroactively, I would like to excuse Mrs. Keener for this evening. How's that?
Second.
And move it second, Mrs. Keener be excused. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay.
Thank you.
He is excused. Mr. Mahan.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Mrs. Woods.
I'm good. On behalf of my husband, thank you for asking about the leaves.
Mr. Ruckman.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, that, that concludes the legislative portion, and for all you know, we're already 20 minutes into the Guardians game.
Are we allowed to check and see who's winning?
Thanks to media for being here. Thank you, Cheryl. Thanks for the other media that look at this online. That being said, I call for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
And move it second. We adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. We are adjourned.